Ask questions, share your concerns, and most importantly, let us work together to deliver a customs clearance experience that is faster, smarter, and more transparent for Nigeria. Once again, I welcome you. I say sano desuwa, nde u baraka desuwa, e kaba. That was an analog. Deserves a modernized applause because she's DCG ICT modernization. Please multimedia finish up. Multimedia. There was a miscommunication. Someone, I gave someone a message. He went and told them to stop.
Bodogu is all inclusive, all equal parties. I want to tell the trade community that Bodogu is a system that you need to work with, to work on, and to be involved with. It is seamless, it is transparent, and there is accountability. Hold Nigerian customs service accountable. Hold yourself accountable. Hold the international community accountable. That is the language Bodogu speaks. So I encourage you all, test and see that Bodogu is sweet.
Change is one thing that is constant in life. And the way the trade is growing every day in the whole world, there is need for change every time for us to be able to meet up with the trends. So I will just employ all the importers that this change is actually for their benefit, for them to be able to, for us to be able to ensure trade facilitation and to serve them better. So if they take their time and they are patient enough, they will see that they will be able to reap the full benefits of the system because it actually pays them to work with the system. It's faster. Every day it will definitely reduce the amount it takes for them to do business in Nigeria. So the Bodogu system is actually going to be bottle-free and is going to reduce the time it takes for them to do business if they take their time to understand the system. It's very user-friendly.
The Nigeria Customs Service Modernization Project is a project that enhances significantly the place of Nigeria in terms of trade facilitation. And it improves our position globally as a true partner to the rest of the world in trade. And it is a project that enhances our national revenue policy with respect to the diversification of revenue. And it is a project that truly provides a platform for improvements in national development. And we are glad that we are part of the implementing entities as concessionaire of the project. And we will continue to play our role to ensure that the right investments in people, in technology, and in services continue to be made towards actualizing the objectives of the project.
What makes Bodogu revolutionary are its intelligent trader-centric features, trade partner validation mechanisms to curtail fraudulent declarations, artificial intelligence, AI assistance for accurate HS code classification and valuation, progress tracking tools that allow importers to monitor the status of their transactions in real time, single document submission allowing users to upload once for multiple clearance processes, simplified manifest management and real-time integration with cargo scanners, electronic document tagging and comments to enable efficient internal reviews, application for Form M directly on traders dashboard, no longer via banks, seller and exporter risk profiling, helping customs assess shipment reliability over time, improved compliance with anti-money laundering laws and economic sanctions, strengthening Nigeria's international financial reputation. These innovations not only reduce paperwork and human contact, but also accelerate cargo clearance, reduce trade costs, and enhance border security.
Previously, once the trader makes payment on the transaction, he doesn't know the status of that document. It depends on what someone is telling him. Your document is either in CPC, that has been queried or that. But with the coming of Bodogu onboard, whatever transaction the importer makes, he can know the status of where the document is and who the document is with. So nothing like assumption in real time. They know what is going on with their transaction. The time it takes for one to come and check the status of his or her job with customs has been reduced because there is no need for that because the importer at the finger of his teeth, he can always see the transaction in the comfort of his office.
Bodogu has come to ensure that these are the things that will remove bottlenecks of trade facilitation for you. So no demurrage. But if you, as a trader, choose to have demurrage issued, then it means that you are not complying with whatever is there. But as long as your documentation has been perfected, you have no problem of complaining to customs that they have incurred this demurrage. That is what Bodogu has actually addressed in terms of network. And you know, that's what most people talk so much about. The network is down, the network is down. I can assure you that since we started Bodogu, we have never experienced any network downtime.
It has improved the skill of officers, right? So you have officers who are better using IT tools and instruments because with Bodogu is basically a web-based application. And then you have to do a lot of things on the system and online. So you do extractions to Excel, you do manipulations on Excel, you do sorting and data analysis, basically. And then the Bodogu has helped with that because it helps with quick turnaround time, right? So you have a situation where officers are able to view HDDs on time, are able to perform clearance on time. Even the terminal operators find it easier to perform exits and get passed. So it has really improved our day-to-day activities, meaning it has made our job easier, actually. Like every Wednesday, we have a workshop and a seminar by 10:30 AM on Zoom where we train the stakeholders on how to use the system. Every Mondays by 10:30 AM also, we have a session for officers because the thing about a new system is change management. If you do not properly bring your stakeholders onboard, it will be difficult for you to get the success that you require. But we've been able to do this across board. We have help decks in every command, right? To help to solve every problem as they call.
Yeah, the major challenges I do get from some of our customers, rather, is the issue of transitioning from NIS2 to Bodogu, which of course is expected. When you are moving from one system, one platform to another, this kind of situation usually happens. And the custom, they have been treating this honestly, they handle it like the reality for it. It's fast, quick, and very, very, they handle it very fast, quick. Unless issues that have to do with bank where they don't have full control over. You see, Assistant Controller Lab, as you mentioned earlier, they are making phone calls, talking to all the banks, managers, talking to everybody. So they sort it out as quick as possible.
In conclusion, Bodogu marks a bold leap into the future of smart customs administration in Nigeria by bringing all stakeholders into one unified platform. The system not only simplifies cross-border transactions, but also aligns Nigeria with global standards in customs technology. It is a strategic investment in efficiency, transparency, and economic competitiveness, ushering in a new era for Nigerian trade. For support, reach out to the NCS Help Desk through the numbers showing on your screen or reach out using our email.
The end credit shows who the executive producer is, the Controller General of Customs. So he deserves another resounding applause. On this note, it is my honor to once again welcome you to this important occasion. And may I now respectfully invite the Chairman of Trade Modernization Project Limited, Alajid Dr. Saleh Amadou Oyen, to deliver an opening remarks. Sir, the floor is yours.
The Controller General of Nigerian Customs Service, Bashir Adewale Adeni, of all protocols duly observed. Before I start this, I would like to seek your permission to observe a minute's silence for General Buhari. Please.
Thank you, sir. I want to just start by standing on the existing protocol. I would begin by welcoming everybody here. It is with great sense of honor that on behalf of Trade Modernization Project Limited, I address you today as we work in partnership with Nigerian Customs Service for continuous interaction and dialogue with stakeholders for the effective implementation of Nigerian custom modernization projects. The continued support of stakeholders in the trade ecosystem is essential for successful implementation of this homegrown, home-owned, home-managed, home-beneficial project. Everything is done by Nigerian customs and trade modernization projects. We are grateful for the strong engagement and trust by all stakeholders that the project will significantly enhance the experience of all users in trade value chain. In this regard, TMP values your feedback so that we can support the trade ecosystem through this project, which TMP considers a national assignment with great economic impact. Lastly, I want to congratulate the Controller General of Customs, Mr. Bashir Adewale Adeni, MFR, on recent election as the Chairman of World Custom Organization Council. I can tell you the cap fits very well. And the world is about to experience the same exemplary leadership with which you have led this project as we continue to pilot Bodogu across all NCS commands. May Allah in His infinite masses continue to guide you as you lead the global custom communities. I thank you all for making time for, from your very busy schedule, to attend this forum and wish us all an impactful deliberation. Thank you all.
Please, another resounding applause for the Chairman, Trade Modernization Project Limited. Because I have the permission to adjust the program, so I have a master program of event. Before I have a substantial adjustment on the master program, may I employ the digital team to play a video that would display the working process of Bodogu. Meriam is not B Odogu, it's Bodogu. Where is Meriam? Are you ready?
Welcome to Bodogu, a unified customs management system and all-in-one platform for seamless customs clearance processes. In this guide, we'll take you through a step-by-step process on how to use the system as a trader. To register, open your web browser and visit bodogucostums.gov.ng. Click the Register button to begin. Enter your tax identification number and registered email and click Next. Fill in your personal details, then click Get Business Details to auto-fill company information. Upload your required documents, for example, CAC documents, by clicking Add Attachments. Finally, click Register. A confirmation email will be sent and you'll be redirected to the login page. To log in, go to bodogucostums.gov.ng. Enter your email address and password, then click Login. To apply for Form M, click Add Form M on the dashboard. Enter all required details in the mandatory fields. Add item, enter details, and click Save. Attach necessary supporting documents under the Attachment tab. Click Save, then Submit, and confirm your submission. Your application status will update to Submitted, Validated, Registered, or Queried. To apply for PA, click Forms M to view your applications. Select a Registered Form M and click Create PA. Review and update the following sections: Name and Parties, Transport Information, Financial Details, Goods Information. Attach necessary documents in the Attachment section. Click Save and confirm your action. Click Submit to send the application to the authorized dealer bank. Monitor your PA status via notifications. Once approved, click Send to the Client to forward its four clearance. To find a specific SDD or PA, use the search tools. Click SDD Finder, Apply Filters, and click Apply. To manage your account, navigate to the Admin menu. Click Users to add or manage staff accounts. Click My Accounts, Personal Profile to edit your personal information. Click Change Password to update your credentials. Click Organization Profile to update your company details. When you're done, always log out for security. Click the down arrow at the top-right corner and select Sign Out. And that's it. Now, you're ready to use Bodogu, an indigenous name for an indigenous software designed to solve our indigenous challenges. You may want to know that B stands for border, while Odogu symbolizes strength, reflecting resilience and efficiency in customs processes. For further assistance, please reach out to us through our verified communication channels showing on your screen. Thank you for watching.
Distinguished invited guests, ladies and gentlemen. As stated earlier, I have the master program. And it is time, and it is my honor and privilege to invite the energetic Controller General of Customs, number one custom officer in Nigeria, as well as the Chairperson of WCO, WCO Council, Bashir Adewale Adeni, MFR, DSM, FNIPR, FNIIA, PSC, Daga. DCGC, sir.
Thank you very much, the man with the master program. Please, please sit down. Very distinguished ladies and gentlemen, representatives from various agencies of government here present. I've seen Plant Quarantine, Chairman of TMP, members of his team, very distinguished members of the organized private sector, DCG ICT, and members of your team, the Zone Coordinator and Customs Area Controllers here present, freight forwarders, importers, exporters, and possibly our enemies who are here. Let me recognize everybody and all of you. And we really appreciate your coming. I would like to do something slightly different because I had a prepared speech done for me. But I would like to speak from my heart and, you know, talk on some few issues. But before I do that, I've noticed that stakeholders who are standing and sweep in the room and see if there are customs officers below the ranks of Assistant Controllers. If you have a seat, kindly volunteer your seat so that our stakeholders can be seated. I want to start from below Assistant Controllers so that... Yes? So I pray that you will become Assistant Controllers one day and no adjustment will touch you. So there are two seats already vacated here. Okay, so we will make adjustments as we move forward. It's a very beautiful day and it's a very beautiful setting. And because the PRO kept talking about the master's program, master program, the whole idea is for us to change the structure of this program and turn it into something that is more practical so that we can derive maximum benefits. Today is Monday, and you know that in Lagos, legosians don't play with Monday morning. So we want to make sure that we get real value for our time. And that was why I said, let us tweak the program a little bit so that we derive maximum benefit from it. Let me start by sincerely appreciating all of you for coming around despite the very short notice. The town hall that we are having is a combination of a number of days of consultations, some done by the support team, some done by ICT, but so many of them done personally by me in the course of the last two weeks to take feedbacks from you on the operation of the Bodogu. It's important that we create this platform for ourselves so that you can share your concerns with us so that we can know your experience on the application of Bodogu. So I want to humbly start by thanking you very sincerely for this large turnout. We thought we had a big hall, but perhaps we have underestimated that there will be this kind of large turnout for this event. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to all of you who have, through your various associations, through different platforms, as sometimes individuals who have called to convey congratulatory messages and goodwill and best wishes over my election as the Chairperson of the WCO. I sincerely thank you very much. But let me bring out two key points out of that elevation. The first one is for us to recognize the fact that Nigeria has been elevated to this position and we are going to be more feasible in global customs affairs. But the second one is more important, and that is the obligation that it imposes on Nigerian customs and indeed Nigeria to lead from the front and run a service that is in tandem with international best practice. We are now to set global standards and to show the rest of the world that this is how it is done. And one of the things that we do at that stage is to give our stakeholders opportunities to provide feedback on what we do, to ensure that we foster partnerships, partnership that works and that provides results that... So WCO always institutes a monitoring and evaluation program for every project that is undertaken, for us to be able to assess, to track success so that we'll be able to strengthen the areas where things are working well and to address areas where we needed to make adjustment. So this is why we have organized this program, which is going to be built around our user experience. So I said today, our emphasis should not be on those fanciful, fanciful slides and all of that, but rather, we should emphasize direct feedbacks, direct observations, comments, complaints, criticisms coming from our users. Over the last two weeks, I've heard concerns about logging in, migration from NIS2 to Bodogu, payments, having problems, and things like that. We had discussions with the authorized dealer's bank about 10 days ago. We got feelers from them. We gave commitments that we are going to address some of the issues that were raised. And I'm happy that we've had some encouraging remarks from some of them. So I am here to start and kick-start this town hall meeting by telling you that the feedback that we have gotten is not all about negative reaction. The feedback that we have gotten is not all about complaints. Indeed, we've had a number of positive feedbacks from all our stakes, from some of our stakeholders, even from some freight forwarders and agents. And because we said we want to have a robust session, I have appointed myself as the moderator of the first session. And the first session will be a short session that we are going to devote to those positive elements of what is working in Bodogu. What are those things that works? Even if it is one or two, we will take them onboard, we will celebrate them, and we build on it so that we use that as a point of reference to strengthen the system and make it more responsive to your needs. So as soon as I finish this keynote, the technical session will start. I would invite all officers who will remove our berets and we will start that technical session along that manner. The second issue, there are three issues that I said I was going to raise, is that I really want to appreciate some of our reform champions, some of our migration champions who have really done their best to ensure that we bring Bodogu to our doorsteps. You saw the beautiful videos that were played. We started it out there in PTML. I remember that when we first went to PTML, I saw some anxiety. I saw some butterflies in some of our officers, particularly the officer in charge of the rollout there, CSC Oladepo. Thank you very much. Please, let's kindly acknowledge the contribution of this man. In fact, there was a time I was going to ask for his birthday so that I buy him a clipper because that particular time, he had no time to visit the barbers and all of that because of the stress. But now he has become a Bodogu champion. And it was the same situation with AC Firem and all the other... and all the other officers who we brought the pressure, the pressure of the rollout. So the first point is for me to acknowledge their efforts, to acknowledge what the P R unit has done in terms of the information that they have put out. But in the true manner of a thoroughbred public relations officer and who has also gone through the rigors of command and staff college. No matter how good it is, we must find something to enhance it. So I am going to suggest, and of course I'm going to lead that charge to ensure that we make Bodogu fully indigenous. I sat down there and I listened to the second video putting us through what we needed to do when you want to log in. And I was hearing some nice, high sounding Queen's English. I think the narration was speaking through and those, oh, that's bad. Which is nice. I'm very sure some people will enjoy it. But can we take this a step further? If Bodogu is indigenous, why don't we also do this in pidgin English? I don't know if any of you had seen a football match being transmitted on Super Sports owned by a South African platform of a match being played and then the commentary is being run in pidgin English. It is sweet, die. People will even understand, people will enjoy the commentary more than the football match itself. So when people hear things like, when you open the dashboard, you know, in a computer system, some of have not yet had asked it, they will ask you, now which one be dashboard for the computer? Namoto with the drive, where they see dashboard? So I think it must be a deliberate strategy on our part to make sure that we break all of this information down to all our stakeholders so that the more people that understand it from the grassroots, from the very bottom of the wrong, the better for us. That's the second issue. The third issue is related to a Nigerian, Nigerian popular proverb which says, better soup, nam money hilam. Technology is not cheap. As we migrate from one system to the other, we make a lot of investments in the technology rollouts. We're going to be talking of scanners, we're talking of system upgrade and all of that. And the Nigeria Customs Service Act has anticipated this. Our plan is to make Bodogu a reference point in trade facilitation. Now that the chairmanship of W C O is with us, we also want to show the whole world that we can take in our trade, manage it by a system that is indigenously developed. So at the end, in the next two, three years, it is going to be Bodogu to the world and Nigerians will see that we have a system that can work. However, technology everywhere is capital intensive. And that was why the act in twenty twenty-three, God bless the soul of President Muhammadu Buhari, may his soul rest in peace, gave us the opportunity to have a provision in our laws that allows the rollout of technology amongst other initiatives. The authorized economic operator, the advanced ruling, all of these provisions are made for this in our laws. And therefore, to fund it, the law also made provision for a new funding arrangement, which is the four percent cost F O B. It is a new, it was a new requirement. It is already down there, discussed, finalized and passed to law by the National Assembly and signed into an act by Mr. President. And this was why, when sometimes this year, when we started to roll it out, we were asked to hold on a little bit and make further consultations with you, our stakeholders. And this is why I am telling you once again that we really don't have a choice. If you want to eat and lick better soup, we must be ready to fund it. And there will be no extra charge after four percent cost of duty, four percent F O B. Once four percent F O B starts, the one percent C I S S seizes automatically. What the law says is that it is from the four percent F O B that everything about customs modernization, customs administration will be funded. Because I believe that there was some misunderstanding amongst our stakeholders that they will still be required to pay one percent C I S. The act specifically says one percent C I S S would seize immediately four percent F O B starts. So, so once again, ladies and gentlemen, I really appreciate your, the opportunity, your partnership, the support that you are giving to us to implement all of these technology-driven innovative for us to have a modern customs system. And now, ladies and gentlemen, I invite all customs officers to let us transit this into the first session. And I want to start by inviting our stakeholders. Tell us, are there some few things that have, that are working that just remain a little bit of touch up that will strengthen Bodogu? After we do that, depending on the new program, we might have a break and then we now come to the panel which has been set up. That will be the official panel where we are going to hear about your concerns, about your complaints. But I want us to start with what works. Let us start with that. Thank you. My keynote has ended. We are now in the first session. Thank you very much. Okay, so is there anything that has worked? I have one hand there. The man looks like an Odogu. Okay, another one here, the man in red car. Please, I want us to derive maximum benefit from this. So I just need you to tell us your name and then you quickly just tell us and then our people would track what has worked. So the protocols has been said on behalf of all of us. So I just want us to go straight to the point. Let's make the most of this. Thank you, sir. Is this one working? If it is working, start from, okay.
Good, good morning, everybody. Please, Mr. C G C, may permit me to stand on existing protocol. Yes, we are very happy with the innovations and the technological driven, which you have already set rolling. But inasmuch as I know, Nigeria is still going through a lot of financial problems and economical problems. Could I suggest that this that you roll out maybe as it will pay Nigerians so that the financial burden might be reduced? I know exactly in the whole world, we are thinking of a way to reduce our problem by checking the clearance of cargo payments and so on so that it can enable our indigenous importers or shippers to be able to measure or concretize their way of boosting the troops of Nigerian in respect to what your vision and mission are.
Okay.
Please, I want you to look into these four percent you are talking about. If there's any way, I'm appealing, if there's any way you can enshrine in the proposed agenda by going vigorously in the tariff to reduce the tariff or the implementation
Okay, so
of most of the tariff by the Federal Minister of Fairness
Once we increase it
to accommodate that four percent so that we can have a win-win to the right, a win-win to the left. Thank you very much.
All right. So let me frame it again. I appreciate your contribution. But I just wanted us to start this by identifying, it shouldn't take us more than one minute, identifying all those ones, all the things that are working in Bodogu. In terms of the difference between it and what we are doing before, how is it positively different? What is working? That's what we want to start with. In terms of the suggestions, observations and this kind of appeal, we already prepared a panel that we addressed that. Thank you. So the microphone was there? Yes, okay. I will appreciate if you make it very fast.
Thank you, Mr. C G C.
Yes, sir.
Please permit me to stand on existing protocol. So for Bodogu, we know that quite a number of things are working, which is the digital tracking of transactions, meaning from the moment you submit your par, you can see the flow of actions.
So tracking is enhanced under Bodogu more than it was under N S S. Please, let's manage and put hands together. So better, better tracking, so you can more, in a better way, track all your transactions and know the status. Okay.
Yeah, so the second thing is ability to have your par immediately it is registered and link it to your declarant. So that saves, that saves time. Under, under the previous platform, it could take like a day before your bank sends you the registered par. So that's like twenty-four hours saved of clearance time, so which is also an additional. Then the last thing would be the timestamp because under the previous platform, you know, you could not tell exactly when something is registered, but because of the timestamp, you know, you can see for sure when exactly, you know, an action has taken place. Thank you.
I want to say, not only you Akakom, you alone have mentioned three. Thank you very much. We appreciate and these are very concrete feedbacks. I'm particularly also impressed about the transparency that you talked about that you can track and you can follow the time when an action or intervention is done. And eventually this will help to reduce the time and the cost of doing business. Thank you very much. No, let's, let's come this side.
Thank you very much, the C G C. My name is Gerald Bamalof, Your Royal Highness. I want to appreciate the, this very software for obvious reasons. Some of the challenges we had in Askuda and N S S has been cut out completely. For instance, every, every importer is responsible for his transaction because he sits at his comfort position and then transmit his par to the particular agent that he wants the job to be done. I know a situation where the importer will say, I don't know who took my par, did the job and did this and did that. So it's a very good system that you introduce in B Odogu, which is helping. And number two is that the downtown has been erased completely because I'm sure that if some of the some of the releasing officers here might even be on this conference, whilst they doing their work with their iPad instead of, I'm not connected to the server. It's another good development. And I want to act, I want to ask if it will also improve better if the importer or the agents can assess just kind of a query because we had that in N S S. You can go to the manifest and look for a particular manifest of your transaction instead of going to shipping company to know, to get the manifest number before you can walk because that is the only thing there remaining. So if there will be a link so that it's just a query, not a modification, so I will come query the manifest and know whether my transaction, the manifest has been uploaded in customs or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Royal Highness. I took particular note of the fact that the downtime issue has been eradicated. So please, our team, we need to make the best of this as well. So please note all those positives and let us ensure that we build on it so that this will continue to motivate us to do more. Those three issues raised by the first speaker and the other two raised there. Okay, so microphone to the gentleman at the other end, yes.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to draw the attention towards the upliftment nowadays. It is going so very, more cases like, especially in the plastics barrels. And we have the par in old platform, old platform, which is a twenty-nine percent upliftment. And now if we process on the Bodogu, same other platform of the customs. And now I would, I surprise that I found there's a forty-eight percent upliftment of the same item. So how custom can help in this regards?
Okay, upliftment of par value.
Same, same par, same items, twenty-nine percent on old platform and new platform Bodogu is a forty-eight percent. So why the discrepancies over there?
Right question, wrong session. We will give the opportunity to address it.
Because I affected by the Bodogu platform.
I understand. I am affected by the positives. I'm drawing the positives first so that I can be strengthened to address the negatives when it is time for them.
No, but it is really affecting and bad, bad impact on our business.
Thank you very much. I will tell them to note it.
Please.
All right.
Especially as a P E T pet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm here, sir.
All right, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody. My name is Kyori Adijumo from Belt Park Bros. Nigeria Limited.
You are importer?
Yes.
Okay.
This B Odogu is just like a miracle. Let me put it in that way. It's working perfectly.
Why are you clapping for miracle? You better wait.
You know, something happened last week. I have to call my bank that have submitted my form M form M on the border. And the form M was validated. Have to go to the toilet before I come back, the form M has been registered. So I wonder, because we are facing challenges before. You have to be calling your bank. They will tell you is this, is that, they are processing it. But you can feel it immediately.
All right. So the first positive is that
It's very, very fast.
It's very fast. Thank you. We take that.
The only area
Go to the toilet and come back and tell us another positive one.
No, because the bank, the bank is, they are here.
Yes.
So that they will notice.
Okay.
If the, if the customer doing their work, if they are doing their work that within the Tinko files, form M can be registered.
All right.
I want them to work as well along with you.
All right.
So there won't be need to call them that we have submitted the form M. They have to know and work immediately so that we can all achieve the goal.
Thank you. I really appreciate the feedback. I don't know, is there any bank here? Is there anybody from a bank here who has a positive testimony that is given us? So we have two of them, one from there and then let's have a woman. Let's start from the lady. Yes, please tell us, can they tell us the name of your bank? So we start with the positives, then later we can address concerns.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good morning, sir.
Yes.
I stand on the existing protocol. My name is Princess Okaze from Wema Bank, sir. So I just want to commend the new portal, the Bodogu portal. Unlike N S S two where you initiate form M and it takes time to be registered. Immediately it is registered. So it's actually a good one. Then on July eleventh, we had an engagement session with the Controller General and we and we read some um pain points and we noticed that um formerly our customers could not see the reason for rejection of their forms. But now they can see the reasons why their forms were rejected. So it's actually a good one for us as a bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Madame Wema. Uh Wema evokes a lot of sentiments in me because since I joined the customs, I've been keeping my money in Wema Bank. You know, if you grew up in western region, uh they call it, the original is Agomogbe. So money never finished inside the bank. So uh thank you very much for the positive uh feedback. Um another bank? Yes, sir. This time with a tie.
My name is Oladea Demo. Please permit me to stand on existing protocol. I will also want to add
Your, your bank?
Fidelity Banks.
Fidelity.
Fidelity Bank P L C.
Fidelity.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat what my colleague from Wema Bank have said, but I will confirm that the notification to banks comes almost immediately, instantly to assess the form.
Exactly, before you come back from toilets, yes.
Yes, and I also want to, I also want to look it, look at it at a second perspective that um when it comes to reconciliation after the collection activities. This is the first time the banks are having almost, let me do a zero difference in our data and Nigeria customs uh data. And we came out with the last reconciliation on B Odugu transactions with no exception at all, which is very good for us. Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Please keep it up.
Thank you very much. It's still uh, uh we still have some few minutes to eleven. Uh let me uh use up the power of the man with all the program to inform you that at eleven o'clock, uh there is going to be something like a fire alarm, uh uh which is, I understand is a routine thing in the hotel. So for those of us inside the hall, if you hear an alarm on the dot of the hour, please, there's nothing to worry about. It's just a routine. Uh for those outside, if they are hearing us, let them also know, we don't want them to panic and disrupt the peace inside the hall. Uh if it is anything different from the routine, I'm sure they will let us know. All right. So maybe one, one or two more before, oh, more positives? Oh, don't let our heads swell. Okay. Uh start with that man and then the man who is raising his hand at the back, and then we come to this side.
My name is Oluajin Falokwe. I work for Meloc. We are a terminal operator and standing on the existing protocol. Yes, just so concerning the platform. When we want to print a EZ note, it was very, very straight, web-based. You can even print on your laptop. You don't need to move around, just print, click, click, nothing to type and everything works fine. That's a positive from the EZ note printing.
Thank you very much. It took us almost six years. I'm not even sure that we were able to achieve it to automate our processes, our release notes with terminal operators under NICEs two. We tried to start this same thing with PTML. I am not too sure if it has worked even before we left that system. And now, you know, six months into this, it's a very, very positive development for us. So whatever oil we deuse on top of this system, please, let's increase uh the tempo of the oil. Okay.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Solubi Ibrahim Enitong. I'm from Megs Line. So uh there are a lot of things that I've seen as positive on a Bodogu, but I've just mentioned three. The number one is the ability to see existing rotation number uh for a particular shipping line on a single platform. You don't have to start opening your files to see, okay, this is Meg's Kubango. No, you, there is a particular portal where you can see this. That is quite commendable. Then another thing
What is the implication of that?
Sir?
What is the implication of that?
So the implication of So when I can see that, I can easily, there is a way I can adapt that and make it available to my customer as a newsletter for whatever transaction they needed for. So that's one.
Transparency. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so the second one too, sir, is uh I observed that why we were doing manifest transmission and we complained to some of the, we complained to the support team. I saw their response time in tackling this and I speak to the scalability of that particular platform itself. Uh uh it, it's something that is commendable. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. He promised three, he gave us two, but not bad. We will manage them. Okay, let's just come this way. Yes, let's hear another woman. Uh the lady, is there a lady there? Yes. Well, it's a lady that gave you the microphone. I hope she did not compromise it. Ah, please, a man should go and give her a microphone, please.
Good morning, sir. I am standing on existing protocol. Uh my own is just to commend the officers um for this uh Bodogu uh project. They've been wonderful. Despite bombarded with questions, issues, there's a platform that uh once people put in their issues, immediately somebody is picking it up to respond. I, I just appreciate them not leaving us in the dark. Um I think uh maybe during the issues period, they will be able to provide uh responses and solutions to some of the issues we have. I'm from Echo Bank. Thank you.
Echo Bank? Echo Bank?
Yes, sir.
Your positive uh feedback will echo in our mind for a long time. Thank you very much. Okay, um, okay, let's go to the back of the hall. Are you a bank or a banker? Bank or both? Okay. Please give him the microphone.
All right, good morning, sir. My name is Oladea from Polaris Bank. At the start of this B Odugu program, I was a bit skeptical when we were having some of our sections. And then it was mentioned that customer will be able to process their par themselves. I was a bit surprised. I was really curious how they were going to do that, but I really like to commend you guys. It's, it's a great work. It has reduced turnaround time. Customers can do their transaction. It has reduced our load as a bank. And then customer don't have to yell at us, my par this, my par that. It has reduced back and forth a lot. Customers submit the par, we process, within five, ten minutes, we are good. So I want to commend the NCS for that. It's, it's a nice one. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a faster program, uh more responsive. Thank you for the feedback. So I think that's enough. Okay, we still have one more, two more? Wow. Okay, let's quickly take them. If you can make them fast. Yes, the man with uh the Eurobar cap, or is it Inuma?
My name is Alarufume Kodri, uh representing Aflon. Uh I stand upon the existing protocol.
Where are you from, sir?
Aflon, Aflon.
Okay, Aflon.
Aflon, yeah.
Okay.
That is a, uh, okay, African.
We know it.
Okay, okay. So, well, I mean, one thing is just this. I love this fact of good implementation of B Odugu. Uh because one, one of the major problem we have, we've had in the past is issue of implementation, as in how do we drive it? The, particularly on the area of training of all the stakeholders and the, I mean, all the, I mean, cafe people that normally, I mean, uh capture for people, the way they train there. And that training has been ongoing, ongoing. So even before they ask question, they answer it because I happen to, I attend, I mean, I've attended about, I mean, several, I've been sort of that training and I really appreciate it. There is one, and one thing I want to say. There is one, I mean, uh officer, Adetong from M M E, that guy is excellent. The way he was dishing out that information, I gave it to him. And we have a lot of them, like Abbas and others, they have been doing wonderfully well and they should keep it up. God bless you, sir.
Thank you very much. The uh training support program has been second to none. I happen to be part of that. We approved it because we want to ensure that we carry along all our stakeholders. Thank you very much. And we'll still continue. Uh last week, I promised that uh we are now going to go to the offices of the various stakeholders. Uh we go to Nagav, we go to Anclaw, we go to Aflon. Uh we bring our banks together again. So we continue to do this so that we make the program uh more robust. Thank you. Where is Adetong? Is, is he here? Adedot, sorry. Is he here? Oh, he was affected by the remover. Please go and bring him in. Give him, let him stand somewhere here. Okay, all right, sir. Yes. Uh maybe we just take two more because of time.
Good morning. My name is Bamdele Odofua from Access Bank. Um what are we, I would like to say two things about this portal. One, the registration for users on it has been quite seamless. And then the secondly, from like what my colleague from Echo Bank said, uh the issues are being responded to promptly. And there are occasions where I've made a call to the, to the control center and then there are probably because they are busy and they have to call me back, unlike what you usually experience when you call like customer line like that, no one will call you back. But this is not one, twice or three times that whenever they are busy and when they are less busy, they place a callback and issues are being responded to. And to Nabeel, anytime I call him, he's always there answering and resolving issues for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I saw Nabeel earlier. Ah, okay, please uh stand up to be recognized. Thank you very much, Nabeel, for the good job that you have done. Thank you. Thank you. He works for T M P. Okay, so um I, I'm inclined to, we still having hands up. Okay, let's quickly do it. Bring it here, yes. You know, why don't you just tell him what you want to say, just so that he will say it together? Right.
Respected CG sir and other district ladies and gentlemen, nobody welcoming the Odugu, but I on behalf of Bujos Group, I'm welcoming you all on behalf of Odugu. Sir, it's really a good initiative because of Odugu uh issues. I got the opportunity to went to Abuja last, continuously last two weeks. And so many Odugu issues has been resolved. But sir, uh this Odugu issue should not affecting our operation. Let me tell you, I think two consignment has come on ninth of July. Because of the big Odugu issue, still I am unable to resolve the issue and it's affecting our factory operation. So we need some, you know, urgent, there should be some connection. Even I want to say that uh the D C G T N, the D C G T N T and I C T, they help me a lot to resolve some of the issue, but there should be some, the V I P department or any other department to resolve the urgent issue. It should not affect our, you know, operation.
Thank you very much. Uh please, let's allow, at least you hear resolve, if you do have anything, you hear resolved. And you heard help me. So I heard help me and then I heard resolve. So for us, this are positive.
On it is populated, it saves time and we are able to go. So if we can be able to also look at some other fields in it, we can so look at some other fields in it, we can do that to really
I, I need to
Yes, positive.
I, I need to
Yes, positive, positive.
Oh, okay. And then we'll take you, who else is there? Then the two of you there and we draw a curtain on the session. Yes.
Okay. Uh good morning, CG. My name is Akina Yelissami from Lee Engineering. Yeah, we have it, the new Odugu platform uh is a new and appreciating thing because um before we used to call our bank for par